First one, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Vicki Thompson, to give us brief negotiations update. Tis the season.
Hey, well, good evening. Let me just kind of briefly tell you about the process that we use. It's an interest-based process, and I think over the years, it's more of a hybrid now. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the difference before we get into ours. But most of you might be familiar with what I would call positional bargaining. That's kind of a win-lose approach where you sit across the table, like slide your offer back and forth. We do not use that approach. We use the interest-based approach, which is a win-win approach. You are trying to find consensus amongst the parties, and you work collaboratively to come up with solutions, dealing with our workplace issues. And we use this approach with our classified and certified units. We use a meet and confer process, which is not that dissimilar from the interest-based bargaining approach with our administrative professional and supervisory staff. So we have not started with our administrative professional or supervisory staff yet. They will be later on this month, but we are almost done with our classified and our licensed or certified unit. We will finish up this week. So with this process, it's really to create an understanding, you know, hearing the stories of what's going on from those individuals that are living that story. How can we help? What can we do to provide better working conditions and benefits to our employees? We also have a set of norms that we all agree to at the very beginning, very common in the IBN process. And you want to stick to your norms. You want to call your team members if they're not adhering to the norms, if they're violating those norms. So these are just some general norms that we've come up with over the years. I won't read these to you, but one of the big ones is honor confidentiality. You know, what happens here stays here until it's been communicated out, and we've got a tentative agreement. And then we also talk a little bit about just those communication tips, both the nonverbal and the verbal, and making sure that we're aware of that and keeping each other in check as we're going through the process. We actually have a system where everyone has their nameplate or tent, name tent card, write their first name on it. If they want to speak, they turn their tent upside down or vertically. Yeah. And then the facilitator will call on them to speak. And then we move on. So everyone has an opportunity to speak who would like to weigh in on whatever topic it is that we're discussing at that time. I already talked a little bit about that, you know, pausing, paraphrasing, well, what I heard you say is this, to making sure that they're understanding what is being said and voiced. And it's okay to ask some other questions or ask some clarifying questions as well. We're trying to get more specificity. We want to place ideas on the table. So there's a lot of brainstorming that happens during this process. It's like, what are your ideas? Let's just throw them out there on the table. And then, once we start the brainstorming process, we go through and we narrow it down. Okay, what is, you know, first of all, is it legal? You know, what you're asking us to do, can we actually do this? Is it legal to do? Do we have the financial resources or the individual resources to commit to this? What are the other constraints out there that we have to be aware of? And we always are presuming positive intent. This is what the process is. It starts out with the story. So we'll put a topic on the table. Planning time is pretty common with our certified staff. And what's the story about planning time? Well, we don't have enough of it, or how can we better utilize our planned time? We have to go to meetings. So what's that story? Well, the story is, I have four different preps, and it's hard for me to take one hour a day to plan for all my four different classes. Okay, what's your interest? Well, my interest is, I would like to have more opportunity to plan for each class so I can provide more engaging lessons to my students during this process. What are my options? Well, maybe I don't have to teach four different preps every day. Maybe I can bundle my classes. So on this day, I teach, I was a business and marketing teacher. I teach accounting and business law on this day, instead of accounting, business law, marketing, and sales. And then on the next day, I just teach my marketing and sales classes. So those are some of the options that we talk about. We don't make any judgments at that time. We don't want to be Debbie Downer. We want to be positive, and we want to, again, understanding what is being discussed is critical, that we understand what the root issue is and the root cost. Then that's when we start evaluating the standards and criteria. So this is the brainstorming part of it. You know, what are some ideas that we can throw up there that are going to help with this situation? And then we start to analyze and evaluate those options. Then we go to the solutions. Well, knowing what we can do, here are our options. Here are the ones that look like they're attainable, that are doable. What's the best one out of these two different options and why? And so we find that common ground during this time. We might ask for kind of a temperature check. So if we go with this one, tell me how many of you feel like this is the right one? And so we do a thumbs up means we agree with this, we support this. Sideways means I can live with this, but I still have a couple of questions, or I want to make sure that my voice is heard as to why I'm not here. And then thumbs down means I can't live with this, I don't support it, and we don't have consensus. So what we're looking for is this for everyone, or this? Ideally, you know, this thumbs up, everyone thumbs up is ideal. So every so often, we'll have a few of this, but that's where we just need to have a little bit more conversation as to why they're there. And that is pretty much how we do it. What we do next, or what we're going to be doing next on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, we're meeting with all of our employee units. The certified unit is Tuesday morning, CTEA, and we're going to be discussing compensation and benefits. We've already talked about language, any language adjustments in those agreements. We did that prior to spring break. So we have consensus on some of those language changes. Tuesday will be, Judd will be part of this as well, just to rally, because it's compensation and benefits. We already talked a little bit about that. We've had the benefit meetings with all the employee units. So they're aware of where our benefits came in at this year. Then Tuesday afternoon, we meet with one of the classified units. So we're taking each unit separately, like we did during the language, when we talked about the different language adjustments. I believe it's with transportation is afternoon on Tuesday. Same conversation, compensation, benefits. And then on Wednesday, we've got the paraprofessionals in the morning, TSS in the morning, and we have nutrition and custodial in the afternoon. And our goal is to have consensus on benefits and compensation with all our units, that we can bring those to the board or bring those back to the units so they can go out to their members, ratify the agreement, then come back to the board and have you all approve it once it's been ratified by the employee units. The meet and confer with the administrative, professional, and technical group will happen later on this month. So you might just see a slight delay as far as when we can bring that to you, but that was at their request to meet after spring break, and we will be working with them. And it's just a half day, and that will get everything done in a day with them. Any questions for Amy?
Vicki, are those meetings about compensation and benefits, is that, sorry, did catch, this week or next?
This week.
This week.
Yeah.
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow. The first one is at, I think, I believe eight o'clock. Yeah. And we meet at the Transportation Center. They have a nice big training room that we meet at. So it's nice to be off-site, off-site, but still onsite. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any else have questions?
Can I ask, have any of our employees gotten raises this year?
They did last year during.
Somebody just asked.
Based upon this process, yes. And I mean, that's what the compensation conversations are tomorrow. So that's why Judd's a critical part of this, because of the budget. And he'll be able to cost out what our employee units bring forward as far as what they're looking at for compensation. Yeah. We do have a facilitator. Good question. She, her name is Shelley Langrath, and she's a HR professional, former school district HR Assistant Superintendent, has been in consulting for the last nine years, does negotiations, works with a lot of rural districts with just some HR projects in general. But she's been through this process along quite a bit. She, I'm getting good response with Shelley versus the person we used last year was, knew the process too, but she liked to do more of the interactive kinds of things, like stand next to somebody that you haven't met before. And I could, our units were like, let's get down to business. We don't want to play any games. I don't want to tell you what my favorite color is, or if I could be any animal, what that would be. So that it's going really well with Shelley. Yeah.
Well, I want to thank Vicki for all her work. It's a long, very, very long, valuable, but long process. And between setting up interviews for schools that are hiring and the negotiations project process, she's been very, very busy last several months, so.
Thank you.
Also, I had a principal say how fine and how helpful you can for your staff to go elsewhere, sell their clothes. It's been very great.
So they're our top priority. Which is comfortable.
That's probably the hardest part of closing these schools.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll bring up Mr. Now, who's going to give us a brief overview of upcoming major maintenance work in the district.
All right. So I'm just going to go through this. Came from one of the, talking with Alicia when we had the new board members come on, and we were talking about what our major maintenance projects were for the year coming up and how they were determined, and what we go through with the state to get to those. I'm going to leave these up here. I can start over. So these are our 2025 capital construction and major maintenance projects we have coming up for this year. The McCormick renovation, if you guys are familiar with that, it's going to be done in three phases. We start the first phase this summer, and the first phase consists of like five different parts of the building. So as we go through that, they'll stay in the building. We'll do the work with everyone in place over there. And the first couple of phases that are the front entryway and the office, administrative offices, should be done around Christmas time. And then as Phase One finishes up, there will be a Phase Two and Phase Three. So it's going to last about two years overall. And it'll address everything that affects students as far as classrooms, administration space, office space. We've already remodeled the library over there. The gymnasiums were done a few years ago. So the only thing this isn't going to touch in those three phases are the CTE rooms right now. And then I'll also be starting the South Triad five-six elementary. There's a meeting tomorrow on that to get our, start our RFP for design bid on that. And probably from tomorrow, through getting the RFP put together with the state, we should probably get design bids back in about 30 days from tomorrow. And then our elementary, we just awarded the design bid on that last school board meeting, I believe it was. So the next phase of that is putting together a charrette team to start putting some ideas into that. And that currently scheduled for April 18th for the first meeting of the charrette. And we do not have the team put together yet for that. So if you're waiting on an invite, that's why you haven't got one yet. We're close. So combined with our, you know, our annual major maintenance was about 10 to 11 million. There's close to 100 million in new schools coming up, and the McCormick renovation over three phases is about 17 million. And then, of course, also going through the summer there, we have some roof replacements, Story Gym and Central. And these are things we talked about that come up in the major maintenance projects for the year that we didn't really plan on. Story Gym, from an inspection, they found out that the roof was loose, similar to the pool that happened out of south. So they had to try and hold it down for the winter until we could get to this time of year. They're working on it currently. And then we have some door replacements throughout the district. All the gym floors are being finished this summer. And for those of you that don't know, we do all the competition floors every year. And we do secondary every other year. There's a nutrition freezer repair, transportation complex. They're replacing all the components on the overhead doors out there. It's a pretty big project, and some of the doors as well. And then, of course, heating ventilation and air conditioning repairs, boilers, fire alarms, and lighting replacements in a couple of our elementary schools there. So that's what's planned for the summer.
Andy?
Yes?
Can I ask you, and I'm already talking about under new business, but I was curious with the playground equipment that's going into at Eastridge, can that be reused and moved to our?
The plan is not to move it to our. If we have anyone in that swing space, we'll leave it. If we don't have anyone there, then we'll decide if we can put it at a different school.
Is it tough to do?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. And sometimes it's hard to get it moved and re-inspected and get everything approved and passed once you've moved it. As new as that is, and with that one, probably we could if it's done relatively near future. But I don't know, if we end up having to use that for swing space, then we would just want to leave. Any other questions on these projects?
One more. Steven mentioned about the five-six. He might need a different design theme or something like that.
That's what the RFP is for tomorrow. And I need verification from the state and from Amy as well before we go through with that. But the design fees came in from our current designer that had designed the prototype and built Metal Arc and County Ridge higher than what the state anticipated or us. And so to justify what the design fees were, the state felt it would be better to put it out. Forbid if we were okay with that, even if they come back in at that cost, then they know that that's where they would come in at. Because it was quite a bit higher than even our new art, which is a similar school, and it was quite a bit higher than what they were seeing around the state on some design bids. So that's where we're at on it. So I've got a lot on these slides. And Vicki, for those of you who don't know, Vicki Bonds back here helps us in planning up there with a lot of our data work. This process we put together here, though, this shows you, we've talked a lot about the facility plans and every four years when they used to give us an index scoring. And, you know, you hear a lot of talk about not doing, deferring maintenance, not doing maintenance with major maintenance. The process, excuse me, the way it used to work was they would do this condition assessment every four years. And then they would score this, and if they had a one or a two, that's what we had to address. They gave us four years to split those out along with our other projects that you'll see coming up here. Gets to be quite a few. So that's how that used to work. And then, of course, as we get that list, we go down here to address the deficiencies and look at, you know, what's the importance, inspect whatever they had listed. We can disagree with them on things, and sometimes they'll change it, and sometimes we just disagree. But then it would go up here into a prioritized list, and that was our summer project list that you just saw was based on whatever that prioritized list was, the top seven or eight, $10 million, whatever we could spend. So it's mostly budget-based when you get to here. This list is larger than the budget. And then currently, they've changed this. Now, they did skip the COVID year, so they had seven years to redo this, and they came back with a new. You guys have heard about this as we went through trying to get funding for these elementaries called Bureau Verifies, studied all the schools statewide, came up with a new way of doing it. And it was probably pretty rough and basic as it came out. They're trying to refine it, but what it does is it looks out over 20 years, and it's more fluid. So if work is, when they project the lifespan of a component, you know, in one of our facilities, where they think it needs to be replaced is where they put it out in those years. And if you could fix everything as it hits and keep up with it, you would stay somewhat ahead of it, but anything that gets deferred just keeps rolling in further years as it goes down through there. So those all go into our facility plan that we turn into the state. And then again, we address the deficiencies of the components, put them on a prioritized list, and then it comes back to a budget, and we take the top numbers out of that budget. So this is where, you know, we try to hit as much as we can do in the summer, also taking into account things like Story Gym, the roof coming off, or anything like that that might have to have some emergency funding out of our major maintenance.
Mr. Now? Good question. So with the new system, obviously, we have quite a few things that are not on schedule for when they should have been replaced. You know, we have a lot of things that are old and probably should have been replaced 20 years ago in their lifespan at that time. So what did they do to address all of those things?
Meaning components or whole entire schools?
Components, no, the major maintenance.
Well, so what they did is they went in here and they went through each school. And like I said, they're still working on this. There was definitely some problems. I think we talked about like Buffalo Ridge, that was one of their things that they had quite a bit off. But they've come in and looked at, I'm going to show you here in a minute, some of what they put in there at each school and what they anticipate the cost of that to be and where they anticipate us having to replace it. And I think this next slide will make more, well, two slides up will make more sense here. So this, from that list you just saw right there, this is what we've developed out of that. This is everything we had for the year. I know this is way too much to see, but I just wanted to give you an idea of how many projects were on there. And this is what totals our major maintenance for the end of the year. So after we got through that, prioritized them and fit what we could into the budget, this is what we come up with, and this is the list you saw on the first page. So that's sort of how we get to there. And when I answer your question, this is what their graph would look like. So the blue, those are new things they think we would have to replace that year. And they have some amounts in here. Sorry, you can't see that very well. But and then this gray is the deferred maintenance going through there. So some of this is carryover that should have been done. Let me ask Vicki. Am I correct on that, Vicki?
Some of it is carryover that they're just trying to add in, but they didn't want to fit all of the old ones into this, all the old ones, all of them in 2023.
Right. So yeah, start it over. If, sorry.
Be a little bigger.
Oh, there we go.
Maybe.
Wow. Yeah. So, sorry about that. Anyway, this gives you an idea, kind of feel like this 2033. We're not going to get enough years out there to get to that one. But these are the amounts they have coming up. So this, I don't know what this is, but this could be several components, could be something large like boilers, a roofing project. And then, you know, if we were to do all that work in 2033, the next year, they're not showing we'd really have to do anything, but then they've got something they think we would replace here. So this is kind of fluid, and if we were to do these and take these blues out, this would drop. This is where they're scoring us at. And if we do some other projects, and this sort of, to complicate things. So we look at that, if we had a school coming up that needed, if we knew we were going to do a major renovation like at McCormick, right? We're not going to go in and do these component things. So it's going to look a lot worse on here. And you're going to get the implication that you're not maintaining it, but there's a reason because it's going to get addressed down the road. Or if we're doing a lighting project, like is on our summer projects at Altavista or Alfa Bola, if they've determined that we need to do something that ties into that lighting project, we would just defer it until we get to the lighting project that we know is coming in our facility plan.
And are they, they're okay? I mean, you have to tell them that they're okay with that.
They're okay with it. If you, yeah, we can, we can talk to them about it, and they usually agree with this. They'll come out to verify that, you know, over what they're showing from their consultant, either is in agreement or conflicts with what we're telling them. It's usually, so far, it's always been pretty clear because it's not, I mean, we're not usually telling them something that's not true, right? So when you take them out and show them what's wrong, it's pretty easy to get them to agree with it and change it a little bit. Some of these things, some of the problems they're still working through, like this. So this list, I'll show you a book here in a minute of what each school has for this list. This is pretty extensive, but if you were to look on here, so this talks about heating systems, $92,000. What they're not telling us is if that's a complete heating package, if that's per unit, if there's, you know, four units in there, if that includes all associated costs, like electrical that would go with it or distribution. So we don't really know, they don't know if that's repair or replacement, or we don't know exactly what their consultants came up with for numbers here. This one here, this is why we put this on here, but this is, oh, that's backup power. We have one where they call for replacing the power system. Well, you wouldn't win a building no matter what condition it was in and replace all your distribution systems because that'd be a renovation then, right? You change all your walls, everything in it. So when they put that in there, those are the things that we would not address or we would point out to them why we're not addressing them.
So yeah, also, are you saying is this going to work where they are requesting major maintenance funding based on these ideas, these time frames, and what they think to cover?
No, we're still going to get the same amount. I think this year, we're going to get more because they changed it for this year. Camera was one through your only. So we're going to see a little bit more. I know they're trying to change it permanently, but that didn't go through. It just needs to increase to be able to address all of them. It will, all of these charts will continue to grow with where we're currently at because we, it's not enough to cover it.
So this is just for them to sort of track what we're doing in the year.
Yeah, they track it, and then, you know, they'll be able, where I think they're going with it, this being the first start of it. And then they've also talked a lot about putting a routine maintenance software statewide that all districts would use to track what we're doing for routine maintenance. And then they would go in here and look at this in our facility plan. And if we didn't touch any of this, and this was just continuing to grow, or we were hitting a tenth of it, and then we requested a new school, they would want to know why. And somehow, in our records, I've thought this through quite a bit. I mean, we would, this would take a lot of work, but you would be able to justify going back to saying, you gave us, you know, $11 million. We spent $11 million on major maintenance, and we did not address these items, and so they were deferred. And the next year, we had twice as many items. We spent $11 million, and we had to defer these. And, but that would be quite a process, right, over the years to then show them, this is why we're requesting a new building or new, and there's other reasons for a new building. Sometimes they're just worn out.
Can I ask you to jump in on this? This is when things hit expected, components hit expected into life. Talk about what it looks like in your office when a boiler blows up. What it looks like in your office when a boiler blows up, office schedule, when it wasn't. At the end of its expected time, how does that factor in then to the budget?
So like this year, for example, we actually had some of this with, um, a couple of, we had some boiler issues, we had the roof on story, we had. Some different projects come up, um, when that comes up, it's not in our facility plan, it's not. Uh, we don't have anybody assigned to it and we don't have any money assigned to it. So then we have to go into that list from the start. If we don't have enough in reserve. Um, we have to go back into that list and decide which one we can defer to next summer, um, or till fall. And, uh, I don't know if you've seen any of the lists, but I had one earlier this year. We actually had a lot more projects on it. Um, and we've deferred some of those to at least fall, um, because of money. So.
How do you prioritize? I mean, is there a?
Well, with the state's assessment, we've taken what, what they're telling us is important. We look at these, um, where there's. Rate, rated, if, if it's a. Immediate need, if it's coming up right in here, we look at those, um.
So they're a rating system then to use?
So we put those in our, yeah, in our, um. For kind of in a, well, it used to be a four year. Now it's actually, it can be longer just in our facility plan, but, um, we put those in. To address those. And then we know, um, from all of our technicians we have in the district that come to us and say. You know, like we'll have, have a boiler that the mechanical group will come in and say, we're having to go. You know, we've replaced all the parts and all the pieces. It's forty years old or twenty five years old or whatever it is. And we have to go out and manually start it almost every day and send someone out to. Maintain it or get it running or, you know, we've had some where we didn't have the money till the next year. So we sent them out every day to manually run the boiler. Until we get to the next building season, um. So that's what happens in there. Ideally, you have to leave some in reserve, which. Um, if Jed was here, probably catch twenty two because he's always getting in trouble if we have too much reserve, I think we're not using it, but then. We don't have it, we run into this issue of, you know, we had some of these projects set for summer and now they're delayed because of. The money in there. So that's how we determine them, just what's going to fail and what, and also what would have the most impact on the district. And, uh, you know, what's going to affect students or, you know. Cause school to get delayed, postponed, online, whatever that would be. Heating and roofing are important, obviously more so than paint and windows and flooring.
I guess that was my question is, they have this system where they're saying, okay, these are the things that you need to do. And yet we have, we can't do all those things with the money they give us, right?
Correct.
And that's what you're saying. And so now we have, we've prioritized of the things they told us we need to do. We prioritize the things we can do with the money they give us. So those things that are left over then get into another. Year. Well, then that pushes all the things that they think we should have been doing that year out.
Doesn't really push them out, it builds, right? So.
But they don't give us any more money to do those. And so how do they think we're going to be keeping up with their, their recommended? List.
I, I don't have an answer for that, um, well, I would tell you, I mean, at, at, um. Previous years at the legislative sessions, there's always a people that will take the stance that. We have more than enough money, it should be cut and that, um, we aren't putting it, we aren't prioritizing it right, um. You know, and, and you can go down there and argue with them a lot if you want, but there's just. Some people, that's just their belief. And I personally, I, I mean, after doing this for quite a few years. I think it's, it's, uh, an uneducated belief, right? If they, and I've invited someone to come down. I said, come down and we'll go through this. We'll walk through every school in the district. We can walk through this. I can show you what we spend. And show you what, you know, what we're expected to spend, what we can spend, what we do spend and where we're at and how much we're losing. And I've never had anyone come and take me up on it. So.
And doesn't this new way of doing it sort of works our advantage that they will then have proof? The state facilities commission and division will approve. Of, hey, they had unexpected things and here's their log of everything that should have been done, delayed.
It, it could have. I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't think it's bad to track and I think it could help us. I even think the routine one. Could help us with the exception of, um. It adds another layer, like on our routine guys, something they have to do and track and run a program. And probably another cost to the district, um, so. I, I don't think it's a bad thing if we get down the road a few years because you'll be able to show that. The only thing you'll have to do is keep up on your routine maintenance, right? And we'll have to address as much of this as we can. And have the record showing this is what we prioritize for the year and why. And this is what we couldn't do and why, um. You know, because to prioritize it, it's, um, it's a combination of, of mostly just the district. Um, maybe in conjunction a little bit with the state, but saying, we think we need to do. X instead of Y, um, because of this. And in this study could show that, well, it looks like you wouldn't have to do Y for another year or two. But we also know the reality, right? That it's failing and we have the guy out there every day running something manually and. Or we have a roof that all of a sudden started leaking, you know, I don't know if you know the admin building roof started leaking over break and. Part of the plaster ceiling fell in on the auditorium, um, so, you know, things like that happen. And that could have been big. It, it turned out not to be as big as we thought, but it could have been pretty big. So that's where we're at on that, um, Vicky, do you have that book? So I was going to show you guys this book real quick and then I'll let you go. Oh, wow. I don't think we'll go through the ones and twos, but those, that little sheet I showed you for Alta Vista. This, this are all over our school. This is that report and they want us to do it through it every year. And update it and prioritize it, but you know, Alta Vista is actually a book in here of thirty seven books. So. That's what that report shows of everything that they've determined that we need to address at some point in every school. So that's, um, there's just a lot. Sure.
In that list, they have all of the different costs where they, where they. And with that, they want us to look at every one of them and tell them if it's enough money. If it's in the right year, if we don't think it's up to them, and we, so we're still having to go, you know, that's all the home others. But the good thing with that is we can also say what the museum, if they're hearing. A lot of complaints that something's not working and something needs to be done, we can, we can pull it in and they will consider, they've been really good at. Talking to me about some of these, because I've called them many times and said, is this to replace? This is not wearing, you can't really repair a wall. If you have all these walls that need to be repaired, put this money, we really have enough to, to clean it. So.
No, go ahead.
Do you have the ability to know the cost if they're after it or anything, or do you? A cost they came up with and we need to know, have the ability to know if it was.
You're exactly right. They want to know, they want us to tell them what a real cost is, because this is an estimate, so. But they're not going to hold it to us. They're going to say it has to, usually these are enough though.
Okay. So they will let you go out for bid and sort of see what's in the bill.
Well, they'll want to.
Well, we have to go out for bid. I mean, we, this cost, they don't hold us to it, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
So yeah, we go out for bid and then if it's more, that's just our problem, right? It comes out of our major maintenance.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, so that's, but to Vicky's point, and what we were talking about a little earlier is. They don't really tell you if this is replacement or repair or how many units it is, or. If it's even really feasible. Some, some of the things they put in there, like a wiring distribution system. Is not feasible to replace, right? That's every wire in this building coming from the panel that runs every light outlet and thing in here. You might replace the panel and you might replace the fixtures, but you don't replace the distribution system. So, um. So yeah, they do that. And these costs, um, if you go through them, they. Some might be legitimate. I'm not sure because, you know, it's a national company that comes in and puts it together. So. Some of them are not even close. I would, I would say that. And then they, they're basically giving us an idea of what we think. They think we're going to spend and they're saying we have to do it and then we have to go out for bid and we have to spend whatever it costs. And this would be, so this is a list, like when they give us the ones and twos of what we used to deal with, there are six pages that look like this. Um, and you have to go through these in a four-year period and include all of these projects into. Your other major maintenance projects. So this is what it looks like up until we started this new one. This was our. Last ones and twos list. So that's, that's kind of where they come from and that's how many projects are on there, um. If anyone has any questions about that, I guess.
This, this is perhaps an ignorant question, but will the school vouchers and. The lowering of our, um, taxes, does that affect, we, we get less money, so we can address. Um, as much major maintenance?
I would assume. It will. I mean, I, I don't know that. That's a, there's.
I'm probably up beyond my own skis on this one, but I think because education is promised to be funded in the constitution. That they will have to find the money to fund it. From a different source, which might mean something else gets reduced outside of us, um. That's my understanding of like the property tax.
Yeah.
But, um. Decline enrollment is probably what's going to hurt us more than anything in these conversations. And so, you know, as we try to tell the major maintenance story, which has been wildly misunderstood on occasion. Um, we have projected costs. Projected at best, right? We think it's going to cost about this much on projected timelines. Not taking into account catastrophes that happen every year. With a finite amount of money. And as, you know, to trustee Hinkle's point, um, so you get to what you can get to. Which causes some consternation of those who say, I thought we were getting the new, along the blank, through major maintenance. But because part of a rip, uh, roof got pulled off. It, it changes things a bit, which, um, if you're looking at one piece of this puzzle, is probably very frustrating. But if you're looking at the whole puzzle, it's frustrating in a whole different way. Um, and that's part of the challenge and, and I think that's part of why, um, this needed to be a work session is. Um, imagine running just even your own household budget, um, this way with all costs projected, all timelines projected. Catastrophe that could be as much a half as your paycheck on any given month. With a set amount and you can't borrow against. And so, um, I think that's maybe part of the story that we had to pull tonight.
Yep. And I think, again, I don't know enough about the, you know, what, what the tax cuts will do to us. I would, I, I, my feeling is if, if it may not affect education. From the educational side, instructional side, but I think, uh, if, if there is a place it's going to affect, it will be on the facility side. Because that's easier for them to. I believe probably reduce the money to, but it did go up this year. I think we're going to see some extra money, um. So that'll help. For a little bit anyway. Other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of that work, um. Was overwhelming and like a lot. So that was, that's you plural. Your entire team since.
Yeah. Well, then that's a good point. While most all of the district was on spring break. Andy and Andy's folks were. Dealing with the fact that part of the ceiling caved in in the auditorium, you don't get to just say, well, we'll handle that back on the seventh when we all return. There were a lot of folks that were back at work because those things can like.
There were, and some of those, what we run into with these older buildings too, with not replacing them is, um, you know, we have. Management plans for every building that show, indicate where we've tested everything for asbestos materials, um, which can. In a lot of those older buildings, you know, can be anything in the walls, the ceilings, the floors, the pipes, um, not in the pipe, insulation on. And, uh, so, you know, we run into some of that and part of my point with this, like these emergencies that come up. The admin building being as old as it was, had that been. An asbestos release or something, we would have had to have that abated with the crew out of Denver and. We would have had, you know, it all sealed off. They just probably had to evacuate, not work in there. And those don't come cheap. I mean, there. I would guess that would have been. Probably at least a hundred thousand, um, a lot of them are two to three hundred thousand when we have to do them. So. And that doesn't count putting it back together, right? So that's. What we have there and, um. So yeah, those are the things that come up that, that really chip away at the major maintenance.
So look for the invitation for the plastering party.
Yes.
Hopefully you don't mind being on a fifty foot ladder while you do it.
I would say, don't be afraid of heights.
Madam Chair, with that, that is the end of our work session topics and get the floor back.
Um, we'll, we'll wrap it up for now. We'll adjourn and back in there about.
That was students from Bay County School. We always love to see those videos to kick off their meetings. That was students from Bay County School. We always love to see those videos to kick off their meetings. Uh, Dr. Newton, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
No adjustments to this evening's agenda.
Madam Chair, move to adopt the agenda.
Can I second?
So we have a motion second to adopt the agenda. Are you in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. The agenda has been adopted. We're going to, um, move next into what I think is always our most exciting part of the night, and that is the recognition of our students and staff, their outstanding achievements. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we've got a classroom in here. We've also got a lot of folks out in the hallway and the lobby. So we just had asked, um, after your student has been recognized, or not even asking, we just would offer that that will will give a minute if if you would like to leave with your child. Um, and then you might have any further parents to come in as well to celebrate their kiddos. Um, but we will start tonight, um, with the recognition of our students of the week. And we get to that. Our first, sorry. Our first recognition tonight is, uh, Alyssa Ott from East High School. She's a senior. She will be um, joined by Principal Mark Kushner and her favorite teacher, Mr. Peter Berg.
Yeah, I'm Mark Fisher, Principal of East High School, and I have the pleasure of introducing Alyssia Ott tonight. Um, she's just a really, really well-rounded individual, and she's got a lot going on both in school and outside of school. Academically, she's always challenging herself, and she enjoys taking AP and college classes. She's been a member of Junior ROTC for four years, three years at her previous school, and one year at East. Um, she works. She's a part of a military family. And on top of all of that, she's a competitive bowler. So she's got a lot going on. And honestly, she's just the kind of student that we wish we could have spent more time with. But we're just really fortunate to have had her for her senior year and to count her as a member of the East High School class of twenty twenty five. So I'll let Alyssia talk a little bit about Mr. Berg and why she selected him as her favorite teacher.
Hello. I chose Mr. Berg as my favorite teacher because he showed interest in my future, my future career, my bowling career, and everything past that as well. He's always been there to talk, even in his off hours and mine as well. And I've always appreciated that.
Actually, it's just about bowling. I have felt like bowling for a long time, a long time. And then I found out she got a bowling scholarship to Penn Bealest. I was like, that never happens. Anybody saw us pretty. Other than that, it took a while for this to kind of open up, but she's going to be a fine, outstanding citizen someday.
And Alyssia has some people in the audience supporting her. So if you stand to be recognized?
The next student of the week that we'll be recognizing tonight is Caleb. It's either Little or Lidle. Caleb is a student at Johnson Junior High School, uh, a seventh grader, and he will be joined upfront by, um, Principal Michaela Bradshaw and favorite teacher Karen Perez Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Michaela Bradshaw, Principal at Johnson. Today I get the pleasure of introducing Caleb Little. He is seventh grade on our South Side Sparks team. Um, Caleb is in the top one percent of our student attendance at Johnson this year, which is something to super be proud of. Straight A student, is super kind, and in avid class, researching colleges, um, wants to become a, an engineer and is looking into UT Tyler. So we'll let, um, Caleb talk a little bit about himself as well as about Ms. Perez.
I think Ms. Perez is my favorite teacher because she has a really good teaching form and style. And she's fun with everybody, but she still keeps everybody on track.
Um, my very first memory of Caleb this year was at our seventh grade orientation. And, um, I immigrated from Mexico to this country, and he found a friend at orientation who didn't speak any English. And by the end of orientation, they had been friends, made plans, and they were talking on Google Translate. So as a former ELL student, that just warmed my heart. And I just knew Caleb was going to be golden. He did remind me today that anything beyond the age of twenty five is considered vintage. I think that was his day at calling me old, but he has a wonderful personality, and he's just one of the students that is considered the best of what the South Side has to offer.
Could we get Caleb's, um, family members in the audience? If if anybody, so would you stand? And we have one more student of the week celebration tonight, and this is Anya Patel from Central High School. She is a senior. Um, so if you want to make your way forward, she'll be joined by Assistant Principal Mick Lamp and favorite teacher Sasha Patel.
Well, good evening. Um, as some of you might know, I'm not Mr. Lamp. I'm Mr. Maloney, the Associate Principal at Central. I came tonight because I thought the students were going to talk about their favorite principals, but it turns out they're teachers. Um, it is my pleasure to, um, honor Anya Patel as our outstanding student, and I'm going to let her come up because we'd much rather hear her talk and introduce anyone who's with you, talk about your future plans and your teacher, Ms. Sasha Patel, who you nominated, and then we'll let Sasha talk about you a little bit. So come on.
Hello, I'm Anya. Um, my parents immigrated here from India, so I'm a first generation American. My mom's in the crowd right there. Um, and I've always been a pretty creative and person, a person who values leadership. So I tried to do as many things as I can, um, in high school that involve leadership. So one of my main things is Spanish Club and the Spanish Honor Society, which Mrs. Patel actually introduced me to. Um, and that's something that I dedicated myself to for the past three years. Um, and I'm really proud of the accomplishments that we've made along the way. Another one of my biggest accomplishments is my published book that I published in August. It was something that I was working on for four, or for four years. So it's one of my biggest accomplishments. Um, and I think it really shows how much dedication I put into it. Um, and then I chose, uh, Mrs. Patel as my favorite teacher because she really helped me participate and engage in the Spanish language as well as the culture, and she moved the classroom very engaging and fun. It wasn't just like another Spanish class. It was something that I could actively use the language and try my best. And I think I learned a lot in her class, so I'm thankful for her.
So you kind of started. I know, I'm taller. We kind of started saying what I was going to say. Anya is one of our like most dedicated Spanish students, and I would say we even like started Spanish Club together, like we got it going. She's our Spanish Club president right now and Spanish National Honor Society. It's. we got it going, she's our Spanish Club president right now, and Spanish National Honor Society at both. Um, I had Anya in Spanish III and in Spanish IV. She's even in Spanish V, AP Spanish V right now with my colleague, Mr. Vega. And just recently, she took the biliteracy test, and she achieved what she needed to, to prove that, like, she gets a seal on her diploma to show that she's belligerent. But yeah, she's just a hard-working student and just a delight to have in class, and I wish you were in my class more. But she's a great, wonderful person to have around.
So like I said, my mom's in the crowd. Um, can you guys prepare down to the class, because she's awesome.
Hello, I'm Megan Case, and I work in the Community Relations Department, and I just want to give, um, our student of the week, so one more applause, congratulations. Actually, I have, I have the pleasure of, um, taking photos of them, and it's, and it's back for the videos that we post. Um, it's one of my favorite parts, I will have seen, um, all the amazing things that the students in the district are doing. And with that said, I would like to introduce, um, our Western Vista representative tonight, um, Crystal Iron, she's gonna be presenting some certificates and saying a couple of words about her student of the week.
I'm short, guys, gotta bring it down. All right, good evening, I'm the branch manager for Western Vista, one of the few. Um, we are very honored to be representing student of the week, we do this every week, and it's an honor for us. Um, in recognition of the efforts for you students that did so well, we are going to be presenting a certificate of achievement along with a Visa gift card, and the same will go to your nominee of your favorite teacher, so congratulations, and keep doing what you're doing, you guys are doing amazing, and I love doing this, so keep it up. Congratulations for you, and if you want to open it with your picture, that would be great, if that was for you. Thank you.
The next students that we'll be recognizing tonight are the first through fifth place winners of the Laramie County 2025 Spelling Bee. Um, so I'd like to ask ELA Coordinator Shannon Brooks to come forward, and then she'll bring those students up.
Hi, everyone, so actually, my name is Shannon Brooks, and I am the Elementary ELA Coordinator for Laramie County School District One. It is my pleasure to be here to honor our spelling bee champions for the 2025 Laramie County Spelling Bee. Um, I have to tell you, these individuals competed on, through online written rounds against 212 peers among 19 different schools. So it's an amazing feat that they accomplished what they did. Um, and then they advanced to our oral competition where they are our top five, and I just found out three of them actually placed in our state spelling bee as well. So amazing dedication and hard work on the part of these spellers. So I'll call you up one at a time, and get your certificate, and while they're coming up, if the families could also please stand up so we can recognize you. So in fifth place, we have Matthew Berg. And fourth place, Lincoln Kenny. Lincoln also placed in eighth place at the state spelling bee, so awesome job. In third place, we have Henry Wright. Henry placed 15th at the state spelling bee. In second place, we have Blake Winter. And in first place, we have Monica Nepper, who placed third at the state spelling bee. Right, okay, now the families do have to stand up because they did it the first time. I do want to point out that the state spelling bee occurred during spring break, so those families really committed a lot to take their kids to the state spelling bees, thank you so much.
Congratulations, good job.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Good spelling. Good work. Good work.
Next up is recognition of the East High School 4A State Indoor Track Champions. We'll be recognizing two students, um, so head coach Amanda Brinkman could come up and then introduce those students. And Mr. Kushner, you could come up too.
All right, first of all, I just want to say congratulations to all the participants and everybody here being awarded and recognized for all their accomplishments, it's an amazing feat. I need Maggie and DJ to come on up here. Um, I also want to say thank you to our administrators for giving us the opportunity to run in our hallways, create chaos, and everything else that goes with indoor track. And I also want to say thank you to the board members and everybody for giving us the opportunity to be recognized as well. So thank you to everyone here. Um, I am gonna recognize two of our state winners. Um, track, indoor track is, is a, it's a grueling, um, it's a grueling winter sport, you don't have any facilities to go to, we run in the hallways, we jump in the hallways, and it's pretty painful on the body. Um, our distance runners go outside, rain, snow, sleet, hail. Um, if it's above zero, then they're outside, so it's, it's not for the faint of heart, that's for sure. And, uh, our athletes, uh, take pride in our sport, and we go long distances to compete, and we wake up early mornings, and for us to have state championships and state champions every single year is, is an amazing feat in itself. Um, considering that we get hallways to compete in, and we have to travel long, long distances, so it's an amazing feat. Um, DJ, uh, this is his first year competing for us. Um, he played basketball up until, uh, this year, and he is an amazing talent. He has untapped potential that he's gonna get, just be motivated with, because he's got so many skills, he's got a huge skill set, he can jump, uh, super high, he can jump super far. He's got speed, um, but he's got motivation too, and I think after winning the high jump this year, um, I think his motivation is a little bit more, uh, because he understands that there's, uh, a door waiting to be open for him to, for his future to go through. So DJ won our high jump at 6'4", it was a huge PR for him, and I remember having a conversation with him, I don't know, maybe a week before we went to state, and he goes, Coach Brinkman, I could win the high jump, right? And he just sat there, and like, the wheels were turning in his head, and I was like, yeah, you, you're like tied for first with three other people. There's a huge possibility in this, this boat for you. And, um, when he started our season, all he wanted to do was just triple jump, triple jump, triple jump. And then all of a sudden, he's like, I could win the high jump? And I was like, yeah, you most certainly can, and he came out of nowhere and won the high jump. And so it was fantastic to see, it was a huge PR. It was the last event on the first day, and everyone was watching, and he stepped up to the plate and did a fantastic job. Uh, Maggie, uh, if you guys pay attention to, if you watch indoor track, our schedule, our indoor track schedule, stage schedule, is, it's a grueling schedule, it's not like outdoor track where you get three days to compete for three, like, over three days to compete. It's a day and a half, and the, the rest time in between events is much, much less. And so Maggie came out and, um, just killed it, um, in one, the 1600 and the 32, and she's just a fantastic talent, she's a sophomore. Um, she's your state cross-country, um, 4A winner, she's also the Gatorade Cross Country Runner of the Year, so she's got immense talent. And they get to come back, both of them get to come back, and so I'm super, super excited for both of them. I would be remiss if I did not introduce their, my assistant coaches that work with them. Uh, I would love to take claim for all of their accomplishments, but I, I get to work with DJ the most, but, uh, Coach Becky Fournier, our head cross-country coach, and our head outdoor coach, works with Maggie day in and day out. And I'm gonna let them speak on their part, because this is their accomplishment as well. So I'm gonna have Becky or Jack come on up. So this is Becky Fournier, she's our cross-country coach and our head outdoor coach.
Hello. This is so much fun, um, with Maggie, I, I'm starting to get kind of used to this, because she does these things a lot. Um, she's just one of the most talented athletes that we've ever had come through our school. And though she's just a sophomore, and this is her, she's now won six state championships. Um, and we have a lot more running to do, she still has all of her junior and senior year and outdoor, her sophomore year left to go. Um, so it's really just fun for me to get to show up and see her every single day. She's one of the hardest-working individuals that I've ever worked with, and one of the most coachable individuals that I've ever worked with. She just comes, asks me what's, what we're doing today, and tries to execute it the best that she can. Um, she runs slow, and I tell her run slow, she runs fast, and I tell her to run fast, and she wins when I tell her to win, so. That's my job, that's all I have to do. Um, it's really incredible to get to watch her reap the benefits for all of that hard work and, um, and for the dedication that she puts in in the off-seasons. She's running all summer, um, in the off-seasons between, between our seasons, on her vacations to Europe, and all of those things, um, she's always running and making sure that she's putting in the work so that she can show up and, and perform when we ask her to. Um, yeah, just, just a joy to have around every single day, she makes me laugh, she's actually, she's so quiet, but she's actually really, really funny and witty, and, um, yeah, I think that's about it, she's an amazing student, she has a 4.11 GPA and is third in her class currently. Um, and puts in a lot of work off of the track as well, in the classroom, in her community. As Coach Brinkman mentioned, she was the Gatorade Player of the Year for cross-country this season, and that recognizes her efforts on the playing field, and then in the community, and, um, and in the classroom as well. So she's just an outstanding human being, outstanding person, um, outstanding student and outstanding athlete.
Coach Rain is our high jump coach, and he's gonna come and talk about DJ. Um, like I said, DJ came into our season just focused on triple jump, and then high jump came into play, and he's just sprouted and has done amazing, good things, so I'm very proud of him.
Hello. I have to quickly tell you that, um, when we were doing track this year, that, uh, I had DJ, and one of the funniest things was we were in the hallway and we were talking about height. And I said, DJ, how tall are you? And he goes, so I'm 6'4", and I go, no, I'm 6'4". And I, so got a measuring tape, it turned out to be 6'7", and I said, uh, I like your 6'4" attitude. You'd want to be 6'7". So, uh, one of the fortunate things I've gotten to do with last year and this year with DJ is, last year, he was the first time he high-jumped for us at East, and we were a little meeting in Colorado, and he wanted to try high jump, because he'd been triple jumping. So I said, sure, let's go give this a whirl, didn't have the mark, didn't have anything, and he went up there and he just flew over 5'10", and he went through four heights before he finally missed it six feet. I thought, where's this kid been all year? And so for that, it gets me real excited. And so being an exclusion high jumper like Coach Brinkman, um, we both just, if we see people that have that passion, it's just your eyes start sparkling, and you have visions of grandeur, and, uh, DJ did disappoint in that regards this year. Uh, we have practice at 5:30 in the mornings, um, twice a week. And DJ would show up, and believe me, I'm a morning person, these kids are not morning people. So trying to get them motivated to actually get in the mode to jump is a feat in itself. And DJ would still come, once he got revved up and ready to go, we had great practices. And it's a lot to ask these kids to get up at 5:30 in the morning to go into the gym on a snowy day, and to compete or to practice. And the fortunate thing was, we, every meet we were seeing DJ just progressively get a little better and a little better. I kept telling myself, he, he, once everything clicks, this kid's gonna go. At the state meet, he had two great competitors that were vying for that first-place title, and they were all evened out at six feet. And 6'2", we had two left, uh, DJ and a kid from Jackson. And I told DJ, I said, you pop 6'4", you've got this. And fortunately, his third attempt, he went over there and he hit every part of that bar with his butt, and it stayed on. And I don't know who was more excited, DJ or myself, but I kind of screamed like a child, and I was so excited for him. But the fortunate thing is, like I said, I've gone for outdoor this year, and already the motivation and the confidence he's coming into outdoor with is incredible. And so you're already seeing in his jumps now, and he's already gone 6'2" for outdoor, but he earned that 6'4" in that state mark, because he persevered, he got overcome, and knowing that it was his third attempt, he, he, he hit it, and to me, that was just monumental. So I'm very proud of him, I'm so excited to have him for the rest of this year and next year, and we'll see what he, the future brings for the guy, but it's a pleasure to work with him, I'm very blessed to have a athlete such, and he comes from great pedigree, so I knew I had something coming. And so, um, with that being said, like I said, DJ is just a, a one, a marvelous kid to be around, so thank you.
We could have parents in the audience, stand so that we can recognize them as well.
My next recognition tonight will be of, um, two more state champions from East High School. Um, these are wrestling state champions, so I'd like to call up head coach Thatcher Heo, and he's got a couple of boys with him. Oh, one, they're there, take it.
Um, thank you first of all for recognizing all the accomplishments of our students tonight. Um, and before I talk about these young men, if I could have their families stand up to be recognized. Being a wrestling parent is not the easiest thing in the world, if you've Being a wrestling parent is not the easiest thing in the world. If you've never been to a wrestling tournament, sometimes you're sitting in bleachers all day to watch one or two matches and but beyond that, just thank you for the opportunities that you guys have provided for your sons and from the time they were young and more importantly, just the the skills that you've taught them to be great humans is much more important than the wrestling aside. So thank you. I know that's large, large because of what you guys do for them. I'll talk about Cozad first over here on the left. Cozad is a sophomore. He was a state champion this year at one hundred and thirty two pounds. The only reason he's not a two time state champion is his season as a freshman was cut short due to injury. But in in two seasons, he has not lost to one Wyoming wrestler. Had a forty two and six record this season. Won the Rocky Welton, which means nothing to you, but it's a huge tournament that we go to out in Kansas. Beat a couple of state champs there and won a pretty big bracket there. Wrestling aside, just he's the kind of person you, everyone hopes that their son will be by the time they're sophomore in high school. He's a gentleman. He's tough. He's a hard worker. He's a great student and just just a great teammate. Was one of our team captains this year. That's Cozad. This other young man is Liam Fox. He's been up here a time or two or four now. This year he became, I think, the thirty first ever four time state champion in the state. Only the twelfth ever in four eight. Had a very dominant season, didn't lose to any in-state kids. He lost to a couple of kids at a big tournament that we we took these guys to out in California. Just had an outstanding season, has had an outstanding career. He's not only is the second ever four timer from East High School, third ever from our our county. But I would say and any coach that has watched him would say he's one of the most talented wrestlers to ever come through our state. So he's signed to go to Western Wyoming next year and wrestle and go to school up there. They have a great program top. I think they finished third this year and won the NJC two A's the last two years. So we're excited to see what he'll do. We'll miss him. Wrestling aside, he is a great individual. He likes to talk a little bit about anything, but hunting and fishing and just really enjoying the conversations outside of wrestling that we've had this year and just watching him grow up over the, really since he's about six probably. So thank you all.
Now we are moving into a long line of Central High School recognitions for different state champions. We're going to start on that list with the Central High School for a state girls cross country champions. And those girls, I believe, will be recognized by head coach Sean Well and assistant coach Jessica Sains.
I was trying to convince one of our seniors that she should just leave because this is their sixth time here. So she kind of gets the program by now. But quite a incredible group of girls we have here. We actually have another girl who would have been on this squad had she not gotten hurt, but she's still got a state title, get recognized here in a little bit. Brenna, wave. If you want to come up, you can stand by us. You're one of us too. They give me a hard time all season long. I get to do that tonight in front of the community. So it's nice. But we'll make this quick because a lot of these girls we get to recognize again a little bit later as well as multiple of them. This is not their first rodeo. But we got sophomore Sophia Rose. What'd you place at state for us? She was all state. She got fifth place as well. Next we have Ryan Cordell Reiner. Senior for us. We have Adeline and I always pronounce her name wrong because I like to emphasize the race in Racines. Next we got Malia Adams Case. Ella Montana. Claire Coles. And Reagan Gebhardt. All these women, very incredible. It was interesting because we had quite the incredible squad three years ago that won a state title. And then we had three of our seniors that were on that scoring team graduate and last year they came out and they ended up getting second and only lost to first place by two points. And it was astounding with how much of a turnover we had that they were able to do that. And this year they came back and were able to beat that same team that beat them. By how much did we end up winning by? One point. So it was quite the turnover. In fact, Malua. It was actually really incredible because towards the finish line, I was standing with our new assistant coach who has fallen into her role wonderfully. She's a great addition to our squad. We got to see in the last hundred meters and we'd quickly done the math in our head and in cross country, you just add up the scores for what place your top five runners got and compare it to the other teams and that's whose wins. And I've roughly had the score in my head and I'm looking at Malia who is neck and neck with a young lady from a team that I know is from Nautrona County and that's who we were competing with right there in those final moments and Coach Sign starts yelling and I start yelling, telling her, you gotta get these girls. And not only does Malia get the Nautrona girl, but then she goes on and she gets two other girls and that really sealed the victory for us. And it was quite a memorable moment in that. And so ladies, give yourselves a round of applause as well. And parents, if you would stand up so we can recognize you and a lot of you all do this again and thank the community for you. That'll make it easier. We're just gonna, we're just gonna really ride into indoor track since we had several state champions in that. Let's start with Sam Melcher. Sam Melcher at the state indoor meet, he was first place in the long jump. What did you place in pole vault? Second? Third? And then what was the other event you placed in? Sixth in the high jump. So he did quite a job. Our men's team got second. We lost to those dreaded Sheridan boys. Done that quite a bit those last few years, haven't we? It's a nice little rivalry that we have with them. I competed against their head coach in high school myself and then I ran on the same team with him at the University of Wyoming. So we got to we got to be rivals, friends and rivals again. The next we have a lot of our young ladies that were state champions across country. They won the four by eight and set a state record. And that squad was Malia, Ryan, Sophia, Adeline. So before we give those a round of applause, I do want to thank the community for not running over these kiddos without running around, especially when we I'm super mean. I actually make these girls run when we got blizzards going on and rain and winds blowing forty miles per hour. But that's probably one of the reasons why they're so dang tough and they keep winning year in, year out. But also, if it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't be able to compete like we do. So I appreciate your support and everything you do for us.
Sam's parents in the audience.
And next, Central High School recognition is the the four state boys swim and dive champion from Central High School. I'd like to ask head coach Josh Bott, an assistant coach, Talon to come forward and with your student.
Thanks to the board and to Dr. Newton and big thanks to all of the central administration for all the support we get. A lot like those runners, swimmers and divers do a lot of stuff that most people would never dream of. They get up early, they're at the pool late, travel all over the state and Brady is a diver. He's our diving champion and he does so many things that look amazing every day and he makes them look so easy. It's just kind of amazing to even think of getting on the board and diving off headfirst for most people and Brady's up there twisting around and hitting his fingertips on the roof of pools and stuff and breaking records left and right every week. As the head coach, my number one job is to coach the swimmers. Our assistant coach and most swimming and diving assistant coaches are pretty much the head diving coach. And I'm going to let Taylan Primmer talk a little bit more about Brady and his accomplishments, but I've been around a long time. I've seen a lot of divers and I can say with every bit of myself and all of my heart that Brady is probably the most gifted diver that Wyoming has ever had. And he's only a sophomore and he's kind of just scraping the tip of the iceberg right now. But I'll let Taylan get into all of his accomplishments.
All right, like Josh said, Brady is definitely one of the best divers that Wyoming has ever seen, definitely the most talented diver I've ever had the pleasure of working with. He not only is one of the best in Wyoming, he is also nationally ranked. So that is definitely an accomplishment that he doesn't ever get enough recognition for, but he is ranked in the nation, top twenty third. He has gone two undefeated seasons as a sophomore. He has the pool record at every single pool that he's ever dove at. So this year he has the Nautrona pool record, the Kelly Walsh pool record, the Laramie High School pool record, the East High pool record. He has both central pool records. And then this year he broke a twenty year pool record at Campbell County High School. And it will be etched in stone because nobody will ever dive at that pool ever again. He broke the state record, but because it was not at state, he does not get to keep it unfortunately. But next year, I think it will be shattered and will be untouchable. He also has the Eastern Wyoming four A conference eleven dive record. He has the all conference and all state. He also received all American honors this year as well. His accolades go on and on and on. And then to top that off, he also was injured and was out for three weeks. Maybe a month. So he missed several meets in that. And more importantly, what I'd like to say about that is when you get injured, there's a lot of mental blocks that come into play and anybody that sustained an injury knows that there's those questions of like, am I going to get back? Am I going to have enough time? Will there be enough time? What's going to happen? Is it going to be the same? And for Brady, like he stayed strong. He came to practice. He worked with his teammates. He did everything he needed to do. He did it the right way. And when he got back on the board, he trained the right way to get back to where he needed to be. And at state, it was dive after dive after dive and we didn't try to get ahead of ourselves. He did everything he needed to do and he did it flawlessly. And from where he's at, from state to where he is now going into his competitive season, I think next year is going to be bigger and better and he has two years left. And I don't see any reason why he will not be a division one diver, even with those NCAA cuts coming down the line. His name is going to be in Wyoming history books and he definitely is going to be back next year in front of this board. I am going to let Brady talk a little bit about what he's going to do this summer so that we know what's coming for his future.
Congratulations.
So I had a pretty good high school season on this summer. I'm going to complete, compete club, which I've done for the last year. And I have regions coming up towards the end of this month. And then hopefully qualify for zones and from there hopefully qualify to nationals. So that's about it. And my family is sitting over there.
And what I meant to say was, thanks mom and dad for driving me to all of those wonderful things and taking me across America.
All right, the next group that we're excited to introduce is the Central High School for a state girls basketball champions. A few girls would like to come forward with your coach, your coaches. Can't wait to celebrate your win.
First off, board members, thank you for celebrating what this young group of girls did this last season, which was incredible. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Thank you, my assistant coaches. We have Coach Goodrich right here, Coach Coganauer, Coach Guyer and Coach Lotisio over there. And then thank you to the parents that are here that supported us the whole year. If you weren't able to watch what this group did this year, you really missed out on something special. They went twenty five and two, the best record in central basketball or girls basketball history at Central High School. Lost to one Wyoming team and we had two losses. The first loss we had, we won seventeen in a row after that. And then the second loss we had, they won three in a row for a state championship after that. And just their ability to be, there's just one word of what their season was and it was dominant. And I think they'd be teams by now with twenty one points in the state tournament, which is, you know, the three toughest teams or three tough teams that were playing. I think we beat teams by an average of twenty two points. One of my favorite stats, I like to say now that I figured it out. Going to state tournament, I did not have to call a single timeout the entire weekend. And that just shows how dominant this group was that there's nothing I can stop or drop or change because they're just doing everything the right way. That state tournament is one of the most dominant state tournaments that, you know, I've seen this group play and, you know, they're dialed in, ready to go. Even though you can't see them now, have them wearing swim goggles in here right now. The look in the eye that I saw in my state tournament was something I haven't seen before and honestly it showed. First, first, first playoff game, got a running clock, which doesn't happen too often, a regular season game, let alone a pole walk game. Second, second semi, the semifinal game, beat a very proud program in Campbell County by about twenty five. And then a state championship game against Sheridan, who won the state championship last year, beat them by nineteen. Between the second and third quarters, outscored Sheridan forty to seven. And just, there's not a whole lot of leagues. I'm not that smart to have a big vocabulary of words to choose from. But they were just down with the entire season, down with the state tournament and very honored, very blessed to be a part of their journey. And a lot of these girls are seniors and they left their mark for Central High School and the basketball program and what it needs to look like day in and day out. So you're two thousand twenty four, twenty five for a girl state champions. Ronnie Carrington. Elise Newton. Elise Newton. Sammy Shaper. Arlie Nixon. Reagan Gebhardt. Taylor Ray. Talen Ray. Carson Temple. Abby Yurk. Izzy Kelly. And Ava Newton. Do you have any basketball pairs?
Please say it out loud if you can't get this one.
I didn't realize Sammy Guider was back in town.
But last but definitely not least, on our list of student recognitions tonight, I have Central High School Speech and Debate National Qualifiers. So I'd like to ask assistant, oh wait, is that right? And Assistant Coach of the Year? Yeah, head coach Caleb Simpson?
Yes. All right, my name is John Watson. I'm the head coach for Central Speech and Debate. And this is about eight of the 13 kids that qualified to Nationals this year. Some things about Speech and Debate is that the season starts in October and runs clear until March. And then we also have a national tournament in May, and then another one that's a week long in June. So the season just keeps on going, and the students really have to be relentless in order to stick out, find the end of the season. And these guys have really put in the hard work and the dedication to be successful this year through the thick and the thin. They show up every day, and they just get on the grind with their cases and their speeches, and they just do a phenomenal job. I'm really proud of them. And so these are our national qualifiers. And I want to do something kind of different. I'm going to teach you guys a little speech and debate format. It's called the One Clap. So when I call a student's name, you're just going to do a one clap. And then for each student, just one clap, one clap. And then at the end, I'll say, shine in central speech and debate, and then we can all applaud together. Okay? Let's give it a shot here. So National Qualifier and State Champion in Duo Interpretation, Merle Paul. Yeah, there it is. Wyatt Merle also State Champion and National Qualifier in Duo Interpretation. Earl Carson. Okay. Ray Mahoney. Merle Zizing. He was also part of a PF team that was a state champion ship team. And it was kind of cool because we had multiple PF teams, and it's called the closeout, when the two teams meet each other in the finals. And so it was Central and Central in the finals, so they're co-champions. So we actually had, and it's a pair of debate teams, so we had four state champions in one event. Pretty sweet. One clap? And our other state champion in public form debate, Annabelle O.
Everyone get theirs?
Shine in Central Speech and Debate National Qualifiers.
We have your parents of speech and debate, please stand and be arrested.
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah, yeah, got you. So I'd like to introduce my assistant coach, Caleb Simpson. He was Assistant Coach of the Year for holding the West Speech and Debate District. And so he was nominated and received the award. He was in the pool, many different assistant coaches throughout the state, many veteran coaches, and who have done it for years. This was his first year as an assistant coach in speech and debate. And he just put in the hard work and the dedication and his stance and his intelligence really helped our team. So I can't think of anyone that deserves this world more. So, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Go this way.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Ah, congratulations, that's hot to us.
Congratulations.
That part of our agenda sometimes takes the longest, that is, I think, for all of us up here, one of the most exciting and rewarding parts of every meeting that we have. We are going to move on in our agenda now to items from visitors. A statement I need to read about how this works, and then we will start with public comment. The purpose of the board meeting is to conduct the business of the district publicly. The board sincerely values community input and feedback on school operations and welcomes public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Individuals wishing to comment during a board meeting must sign up by 5:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Sign up for public comment can be done electronically by accessing the form available in Board Docs under the public comment portion of the meeting agenda. Alternatively, individuals may also contact Darlene Davis to be added to the electronic signup sheet. We will begin by hearing public comment on agenda items, followed by public comment on non-agenda items. Please keep in mind, this is a time for board members to listen and consider, but not to comment or debate. The board asks that all speakers first state their first and last name. Second, keep their comments to three minutes or less. And third, note that if you wish to discuss matters pertaining to the employment of a district staff member, such as the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, investigation, discipline, or dismissal of an employee, this will not be done during the public comment portion of the meeting. Such comments should be directed to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, or you may request to meet with the board during executive session. So we will start with public comment regarding agenda items. And I would like to ask Patricia McCoy to come forward.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Patricia McCoy, and I'm again representing the petition submitted March 17, 2025, signed by qualified electors under Wyoming Statute 21-3-110. I first want to thank the board member who ensured this matter was added to tonight's agenda. Your effort is greatly appreciated. Counsel suggested that our petition falls under Wyoming Statute 16-3-106 and 16-3-103 of the Wyoming Administrative Procedure Act, citing WS 16-3-101 subsection B subsection I, which defines agency as including boards of political subdivisions. I respectfully counter that Wyoming Statute 21-3-110 is more appropriate. WAPA governs board rulemaking for state or subdivision-wide agencies, but our petition targets this district alone, asking you to consider a policy for Wyoming Statute 6-8-105, the Wyoming Repeal Gun-Free Zones Act effective July 1, 2025. Wyoming Statute 21-3-110 subsection A subsection 13 specifically mandates this board to act on petitions from five or more district citizens within 30 days, today being day 21. We are not asking for a full policy by April 16th, as the law allows until July. We are asking for review to begin. Wyoming Statute 16-3-101 B subsection B subsection I may include boards, but Wyoming Statute 21-3-10's focus specifically on school district governments and citizen proposals fits our intent, not WAPA's formal rulemaking. I'm grateful tonight's agenda inclusion meets our second request, and this public discussion fulfills our third. So thank you all. We ask you for four actions. One, to review our model policy firearms and concealed carry on school property aligning with Wyoming Statute 6-8-105. Two, agenda, which was done this evening, allow public comment, which is happening now and will come in the 45-day comment period, and consider adopting our policy. With two of the items addressed, we look forward to the policy advisory's review and future public input opportunities. The petition and policy were submitted and provided at the March meeting, but I understand the board may not have received all of those copies. So if any member would like one, please see me after the meeting, or shoot me an email or text, and I'll be happy to provide that for you. Thank you again for all of your work.
And now moving on to public comment on non-agenda items. Dylan Ford is signed up. Is he here or online?
Man, sure there are no hands raised online.
We'll see if he's out in the lobby. I think somebody went to library. Okay.
Are there bubbles?
So you don't see anybody. Okay, all right, we will move on with the agenda. Moving into board communications and reports, starting with information on upcoming meetings. April 9, at 6:30 PM, there's a parent advisory committee meeting in the boardroom. April 16, we will have our board planning meeting, the executive trustees with superintendent. That's at 1 PM, and we need to get a couple of board members signed up for that. So trustee Humphrey is able to attend that one. And do we have another trustee that would like to come? Okay. The trustee Cook. Okay. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, April 21st at 6 PM. And now going on into individual board communications and report, this is where we have added, just sort of made a change to the agenda. We're going to start under miscellaneous information discussing the petition that Patricia McCoy gave to us last week. Want to just give a little bit of background information, our legal counsel Amy Polly is online tonight. She will probably provide real information, and then we'll open it up for discussion from the board. But at that March 17 meeting, we received a petition, as Ms. McCoy talked about, asking the board to consider and adopt a proposed policy regarding the implementation of the Wyoming Repeal Gun-Free Zones Act. Underlying state statute 21-3-110, they filed this. This state statute requires us to consider and take some action on any petition that is brought by at least five citizens. And we have to do that within 30 days. So as Ms. McCoy pointed out, we're a few weeks into that. Our last meeting was March 17, so that was when she brought that forward. With the recently passed legislation at the state level, the repealing gun-free zones, our school district and districts throughout the state will be required to pass a policy that's in line with that law and have that in place by July 1. So this is, this is a topic we will be discussing. It's a policy that we will be having to write. So this petition came a little bit before we were, as a district, looking at a policy or policy language, but before we, as a board, have seen it. But we do need to act on this within this 30-day timeframe. So I would like to now turn it over to Ms. Polly, and Ms. Polly was hoping that, my message went away, that you might be able to just remind the board our policy process for policy adoption. Give us a quick overview of that petition with the four items that has been requested on that. And also, if you might, before we start our discussion, just give us a quick overview of the policy being proposed. And then I don't know if we have that to pull up on the computer for folks in the audience who are online to see, or maybe we don't this time, but it will be posted in the next few days. We'll ask the admin team to get that online so folks can review it there. But Ms. Polly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My apology is that I'm not there in person tonight. I think I caught everything that you asked me to go through, but if I miss anything, please feel free to interrupt and let me know. So to begin, you receive the petition on March 17, as the chair said. Statute then requires you to take some action on that petition within 30 days. So to look at the definition of action, we go to the Public Meetings Act, which governs your meetings. And in 164402, in the definition section, action means the transaction of official business, including collective decision, a collective commitment, or promise to make a positive or negative decision, or an actual vote upon a motion, proposal, resolution, regulation, rule, order, or ordinance. So where you are tonight, because this is a petition for rulemaking, you have to still follow your own policies on how you adopt policies, as well as state statute regarding the process for adopting policies. So at this point in the process, in chapter two of board policy, it outlines how you, as a board, develop your policies. That does involve a presentation or a review by the Policy Advisory Committee, which is defined in your policy, the members of that committee. You may remember that at the last meeting during the superintendent's update, Dr. Newton mentioned that we had started looking at that statute and drafting language for that policy. The new statute is very specific on what has to be included if the board chooses to adopt a policy implementing requirements for concealed carry. I'd remind the board that if you decide not to adopt a policy, it does not mean that there will be no concealed carry by staff or volunteers. What it means is that all staff, all volunteers who have a concealed carry permit would be allowed to carry within the school. So what the policy that you would be considering would do is effectively, it puts in place training requirements that in addition to a concealed carry permit, that an individual staff member or volunteer would have to comply with in order to carry lawfully on school. Again, this would not only apply, excuse me, this only applies to staff and volunteers. It does not apply to anyone else, so it does not affect anyone else's ability to carry on school property. Only district staff, district volunteers. So that's part of where we are. So tonight, Ms. McCoy's petition goes through, and I apologize, I'm a little clunky. Goes through and runs through basically a lot of the requirements that are in the new statute regarding training requirements. There are some additional parts of that policy draft that go beyond what the statute allows for. For example, For example, let me see where I'm at. So on page two toward the bottom of that page, there's language that says the district shall implement an age appropriate firearm safety education program at each grade band level that promotes responsible gun ownership and safety. Without, you know, speaking at all to the merits of, of having a policy on, on that or curriculum regarding gun safety. I don't know that that's an appropriate place within this policy. Because again, this, this directly relates to how individuals are allowed to carry firearms on school district property, not you know firearm safety in general. There is a lot of, of sort of concern about this statute and, and questions still about what would be appropriate in this type of a policy versus what's not. And that's based on a couple of things. One, this, the particular bill from the legislative session repealed an existing statute that dealt, dealt with school districts and their policy related to staff carrying concealed on, on campus. That repeal, that statutory language included different things than what is included in the bill. So there is a little bit, arguably, a little more flexibility under the previous version of statutes that allowed for concealed carry policies than there is in the new version. So I would just exercise a little caution when you're looking at any, any proposed policy. You know, the legislature made it very clear that, that the state has preemption authority and is the only entity that can govern the carrying of firearms within the state of Wyoming. And so that's a fine line that we want to make sure that, that you don't get up against. And again, like I said, and like the chair pointed out, this is a conversation that is ongoing across, across the state of Wyoming and in school districts. And so I've practiced with two attorneys today and there's not clear consensus on what can and could, could be included within the, the policy and what would venture kind of too far and exceed the authority that the legislature has given school boards in relation to this policy. So again, within your process, generally speaking, policy development starts with staff and like I mentioned, and, and Dr. Newton mentioned at the last meeting, staff has begun drafting a policy related to concealed carry for school district employees and volunteers. Mr. De Porter, our safety and security administrator, has been working closely with law enforcement on the training and instructor and curricular requirements that, that the statute allows the district to have input on. And so that piece is also, I would say, missing in the petition that's before you tonight. Statute allows for the district to, in consultation with local law enforcement, come up with qualifications related to the individuals who would actually be conducting the training. Mr. De Porter has been working really closely with both CPD and the Laramie County Sheriff's Office on potential courses that would satisfy the statutory requirements as well as who would be qualified to offer those courses. So that's a piece that I would say is missing from your, the policy that has been proposed to you tonight. That is actually included in the, in the policy that the district has been working on. At this point, my recommendation, should the board choose to, we could put this, both the policy that was presented by Ms. McCoy tonight and, and last meeting, as well as the policy that the district has been working on, out to the policy advisory committee for their input and some feedback prior to the board voting on any policy that would ultimately go out for the forty five day review under the APA. So you could, I mean, as soon as tomorrow, we've got the, both versions of the policy, we can send both of those versions out seeking input. Our timeline in order to comply with a forty five day is a little bit tight on this one. So in order to have a policy in place by July one, the board would need to put this out for forty five day public comment at its next April meeting. You know, that's, that's ahead of the twenty five, twenty six school year by, you know, a good month and a half. But that would cover the summer school period that begins, that runs into July. If we needed to, if the board chose, if we need to push it out further, we could always put, you know, the version of the policy that the board chooses to go with. Put that out for forty five day review potentially in May, and that pushes that out into, to July. But the board could also adopt it on an emergency basis ahead of that July one cutoff, so that it would be effective for the summer school period. I've been talking for a while and I feel like I've, I've talked too much, so are there any questions that I missed anything?
So we probably have questions who would like to go first, trustee Hinkle?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Polly, this has nothing to do with any visitors that come in as far as concealed carry, this is just staff and volunteers, is that correct?
Madam Chair, trustee Hinkle, yes, that is correct. So the, the change to the statute that was made during this last session allows for visitors, any adult who has a concealed carry permit to lawfully carry on school district campuses. It just gave the school districts flexibility to adopt additional training requirements for staff and volunteers only.
Thank you. Trustee Cook?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Amy or Ms. Polly, thank you for your, all your time and I, I had sent her an email, pretty lengthy email today. And she responded to most of my questions. My two concerns about the policy that we've received from Ms. McCoy was that, as you have stated, the education part of it, I think our teachers have quite a bit on their plates right now, so to add gun safety to it, I think is something that might not be such a, a great idea. And then the second thing I'm concerned about in the same policy was if people have the concealed carry and I think they need to be accountable if something happens to a gun in the schools, some accident, whatever. And I think this policy says there should be no accountability and I believe that, that there's the parents or whoever, the person that has the concealed carry should have some type of accountability for an accident. So those are my concerns.
Anybody else?
Trustee Burden? Yes, I, I have a question. I appreciate all the hard work that's been done thus far. But the thing that I was pondering today is what if there is an accident and somebody is seriously injured or, or killed? Gun accidents happen in the, you know, in the community as well. Is the school district going to get sued because the incident happened on the school property? And is that something that can be considered, should be considered, not allowed to be considered? Because if somebody dies, that to me just screams million, multimillion dollar lawsuit.
Absolutely.
Ms. Polly, do you have any feedback on potential liability for the district itself if, if an accident happens with a gun?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, trustee Burden. That is definitely a concern. Mr. Ciccarelli is, is currently working with our insurance to figure out what coverage could potentially look like for the district with having staff and volunteers carrying. And the proposal that the district's staff have been working on, it kind of clearly states that if, if an employee or volunteer chooses to carry, that is their decision solely, it is not part of their job duties. There is no, you know, expectation by the district that they will carry and that they would be liable, you know, for their own actions with respect to their firearm use. Now, would, will that stop a lawsuit? No, but I think that there's, you know, we can, we can limit it as best we can and we can seek, you know, work with our insurance to see what kind of coverage and what that looks like from a liability perspective.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Carson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate this conversation and just thinking through these different issues. I too think the firearm education is a curriculum question and that gets us into a lot of issues. Trustee Cook raised one of them about time, but also just funding and we're looking at finding budget cuts, so I'm not sure this is the time. But I had another thought when I was reading through this and it's kind of up above that section a little bit. And it talks about employees and volunteers who carry concealed firearms will be kept confidential. And I appreciate the sentiment behind it and I understand it. But on the first page, it also says that you plan on carrying as an employer or volunteer, you need to notify the superintendent prior to. And I guess as we're working through ideas in drafting our policy and, and I do think that we should share this policy tonight, we should decide to ask them, ask the staff to share it with those that are working on the overall policy so that they can take the good, good ideas and mix it in with their ideas. So I do support that idea. But back to this point, it just occurred to me as I was reading through it and I'm sure I'm overlooking a lot of other issues, but this one popped to mind and that is if there was an active shooter. And you had employee or a volunteer that had concealed carry, they would need to be able to identify themselves as someone other than the active shooter. And I think that that's an issue that we should think about as a board as we move through this process as well. And maybe that's as simple and this is, I know nothing about this, but maybe it's as simple as, as issuing them once they've gone through any requirements our district determines are needed, some kind of identification that they can use if they hold their, their gun out to help. So that's another issue I, I would like the staff to at least have a conversation around is how to, how to police officers and, and police, different authorities identify those employees and volunteers who are concealed carrying in the, in those active shooter situations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Trustee Hinkle?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to make a little bit of a statement here as probably the only person up on this dais who has been in an emergency room when a child has come in from an accidental shooting and died from a brother shooting them. It is devastating to a family, it is devastating to that child. It is devastating to the community. I am wholly against having guns in our school. I'll say that number one, wholly against it. I understand we have to have a policy in place. We have to do this, the state has imposed this on us, I get that. It is unconscionable to think that there will be a gun in elementary school and that these kids, no matter how careful people are, can die. So that's my statement, number one. Number two, having read the draft that was developed by the employees of the district, all of the things in the current policy that Ms. McCoy gave us that apply to the law are in that policy. It does not have the other extraneous parts such as the firearm safety training and the information about not being liable. And it also includes a portion that says who, which types of training would apply to this. So my, what I would like to propose is I would like to move that we do not send Ms. McCoy's policy in, that we allow the people doing the policy to see it if they want to, but that we formally send the draft policy written by the employees and not Ms. McCoy's policy. And if they want to make changes to that, then there will be public comment allowed and we will discuss that at that time.
Anybody else? So in visiting with, with Ms. Polly earlier today, you know, any, any policy that we pass will have to be strictly in line with state statute and what has been decided by our state legislature. Any deviation from that or any extra that we add really could put us in a bad position as a district for tightening things up more than they should be tightened or adding extra allowances that maybe were never the intention of the lawmakers. I, I, it just, you know, the, a draft policy that the district has been working on just came to us very late this afternoon. I knew that, that had been in the works, but what I would propose and we, we're not voting right now, it's, this is not a business item, but that perhaps this policy, this draft and what our district has worked on both go to the policy advisory committee. And let's let those folks that have very vested interests in different aspects of what this looks like and how it's implemented, let's let them sort that out. I, my understanding is there's probably not much in this that is not actually taken directly from the state statute, so. But maybe we could, before, it, it will come back to us soon, I mean, at the next meeting, it sounds like, but give both of those drafts to the policy advisory committee, let them flush some things out, let them draw the, the experts that are already having these conversations. Mr. De Porter, as Amy mentioned, just even today was meeting with local law enforcement about this very thing. So let's, I'd like to ask the staff to take both of those drafts, give them to the policy advisory committee and let them tweak that before we get a draft policy as a board to even really, and this is all pretty premature tonight, for us to react to then at the next meeting and decide on putting it out for a forty five day review. Not, you know, I, I appreciate that we have folks in the community that are super invested in this as well. And the, the work that went into this, but I would like to see both policies go to that policy advisory committee and let them hammer it out before we actually react to anything as a board. Anybody else thoughts on that? Trustee Humphrey?
I agree with putting both in front of the policy advisory committee and seeing what they give us at the next meeting to put forth to public comment.
Anybody else have thoughts, one way or another on it? Like I said, we can't, we're not voting right now, but I'm not sure that votes for them to look at.
Madam Chair, I also agree that we should send both two policies to the committee. We do have signatures from members of our community, so they are stakeholders as taxpayers. I don't know most of the people on the list, but I suspect there's parents on that list as well. And so I believe that the work that they've done and things they've considered need to be part of the discussion process as we move forward.
Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have not had the opportunity to read the draft, so I'm at a real disadvantage, but I'll go right along with trustee Hinkle. I am not a proponent of guns in our school at all. And so I know we've got to go along with it because of the state statute, but I think that we need to be very careful about what we do and how we allow that in our schools. So I would be supportive of, I, I believe that our school district, and I don't know Mr. De Porter, but I believe that our school district would have the best interests in, in what would be best for our schools. to comply with House Bill one seventy-two and, or this new law. And so I guess I am for just putting forward the policy that our school district would come up with.
Somebody else want to weigh in on, on that? I personally am not sure how it would hurt for the board or for the Policy Advisory Committee to look at both drafts. One that our legal counsel and internal folks have provided and one that has been put together by community members that seems to mostly cite state statute in it. And let that, let that be the first ground for hammering things out to, to give us something to react. We don't typically even look at policy and I mean, it, it goes to them first before we ever have much say on. Trustee Ashby, did you?
No, I don't have any problem with it going forward. I, I'm reading through, comparing again. I think the only clause in there that I, I don't think we are at a point as a district to implement a firearm safety program internally. And I'm reading the indemnity clause differently than Trustee Cook is, so I don't think it's that different. And so I
Okay, Trustee Carson, did you have any thoughts on that? About both drafts?
The first to mention that just a trash to go.
Okay, all right. Seems to be then the role of the board that we would ask our admin team to send both drafts for the one that we just received and I haven't read it yet either, but that our staff has put together as well as this one, send those right away to the Policy Advisory Committee and let them start taking a look at it. Ms. Polly, so we would hear back with a you, you would have a proposed policy for us to look at and wrote on putting out for forty-five day review at the next meeting. Is that right?
Madam Chair, yes, that would be correct. We would take input from the Policy Advisory Committee over the next probably week and then combine all of that into a draft policy for the board to consider for forty-five day review. Madam Chair, if I may, just one question that I have. Ms. McCoy has the policy as falling in chapter five supportive services and, and section sixteen and in looking at the policies. I, I feel like it would probably be, go better in chapter three, section eight, which relates to the general school administration. Would it be okay so that the policy advisory is, isn't confused to the thinking that we're doing two separate policies or making changes in two separate places? Would it be okay if I, I make that one change on where the policy would be located? And I'm, and you know, Ms. McCoy, if you want to shoot me an email, if you think that it's important that it it be located in that, in that particular section, we can leave it as is, but I feel like it might be a little confusing to policy advisory and others if we have two potential policies that deal with the same issue, but that are listed as, as being located in two different sections within the policy.
Ms. Polly, we bring out some nods in the room, including from Ms. McCoy. So I think we're okay to move it to that other section.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And then Ms. Polly, with that, I'm starting that process with the Policy Advisory Committee. One of the requests with this was that this would be shared publicly and start receiving feedback. Would it be possible to have our staff put the proposed policy, both policies that are going before the Policy Advisory Committee online this week with some sort of link to start providing feedback. I'm not, I'm not sure whether we include education in it or not, that the, the feedback we get changes very much. But that was one of the requests that, that we posted publicly or we could post it publicly and then wait for feedback until the Policy Advisory Committee is done, is magic, but what do you think about that?
Madam Chair, and I apologize, I forgot to mention that. We can certainly post both drafts online with separate links for the Microsoft form to provide feedback. And then we can include kind of that public pre-public comment feedback as well as what we get from the public or, excuse me, from the Policy Advisory Committee. And that may just take it, you know, policy advisory, we can get that out first thing tomorrow. Getting it posted online might just take a little bit more time than that.
Does that muddy the waters? Finally have the policy out for forty-five day review. The, the board seems concerned about that. Most everybody, I was looking at you thinking that that might make things further, but I wasn't sure with this petition that that was one of the requests. How do we handle that? Okay, Trustee Carson?
Madam Chair, I, I don't feel strongly about this, but it's really different than how we do every other policy. So even as someone that's been on board six years, it's a little confusing to me. I think that what the majority of us agreed to was give all ideas to the policy committee. And this would be one of them. And have them hash out and talk about all these different issues. I raised an issue I'd love to see them talk about tonight. You know, there's, there's things in this that some of us has said, I'm not sure we can afford or take time out of classroom to include have them hash all of that out, work with, you know, work within the parameters of their policy committee. And then bring back something that we can all look at, including our public. And they can provide some feedback. So that's kind of where I think we should go on this. We're at the ideas, idea stage right now, I think.
Trustee Hinkle?
Thanks, Chairman. I do have one other thing. I just wanted to make a statement because the, the petition came to us with a, a, a background note stating that they were concerned that the Wyoming School Board Association was going to do a draft policy that was generic. And I just wanted to clarify that the draft policy we're sending to the committee, the Policy Advisory Committee is actually a policy that was drafted by our district employees and not by the WSBA. And Ms. Polly was not even aware of a draft policy, so I'm not sure where that information came from.
I have not seen one.
Ms. Polly? That's correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Hinkle, that's a good point. I know that WSBA will likely be putting out a draft policy in the future, but at this point, there is no proposed policy by WSBA.
Right, so I'm not sensing that it would be the way of this board to start collecting public comment on those draft policies at this point in time. Is there a legal issue with that with regards to the petition we've received, Ms. Polly?
No, again, Your Honor, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Sometimes I forget where I'm at. The, the statute requires that you consider and take some action. And so you are not required to do everything that is requested in this, in this petition. You're just required to consider it and, and take some action. So, and again, looking at the definition of action, it can be you know, a, a vote and a yes and no and kind of anything in between at this point because we haven't, we we can't formally put it out for the forty-five day review yet. So you can make the collective decision to either put it public facing or to not put it public facing. That's, that's a board decision.
Okay, well, let's just forward it then. I'm, I'm hoping to see nods here to the Policy Advisory Committee along with the draft policy that the district has developed. And then revisit this in two weeks when we have a policy to review. We'll follow our standard procedure moving forward then with policy adoption. Once the board votes, if we vote at the next meeting to put that out for forty-five day review, then it would be posted at that time. And, and public comment would begin.
Madam Chair, we're getting real on it.
Thank you. All right. That took up a lot of time over individual board communications or reports. All right, we'll see you now. I'll turn it over to Dr. Newton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief ones this evening. While everyone was enjoying spring, we did have a couple of groups that we wanted to acknowledge. It was professional appreciation day and librarian appreciation day last week. And so even though we're on break, we were certainly thanking those folks and they want to publicly thank them this evening, both of those groups for the work they do for our kids. The second thing I wanted to mention is we have been diligently working on the staff survey that we got the results on a while back. And what we were doing was incorporating recommendations from that survey into action items in our strategic plan. Whereas the strategic plan is a blueprint. We're having real players as a district and a lot of recommendations from that survey are really woven into the very fabric of how we will be proceeding. So I will be sharing those updated strategic plan very, very soon, which is thanks to a very, a lot of hard work in the Division of Instruction. We will be cross referencing items from the survey in the strategic plan. So if anyone cares to know where items, recommendations from the survey are to be found, it will be very easy to reference within the strat plan work itself. And so as we're finishing up some of the, just the wing spitting and the finishing touches on all these hyperlinks, it's coming very soon and we will certainly show with both the board and the public as we finish up that work. But with that, Madam Chair, that is it for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. We'll move now to consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of ceiling are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item in the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda?
Can I ask a question on one?
Sure.
The recognition of homeschool curriculum, when does that stop being something we do?
Madam Chair, Trustee Ashby, I, I would have to look to see specifically if that's a July one date or if it is effective or maybe that's a great question. And turns out there's a mix of dates on when some of these go into effect. We're looking at that right away. And if the date has passed, we will absolutely take that off our future agendas.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, clarify, that is a July one and so up it will continue through the school year and then beginning next school year, you are, will no longer be required to approve the homeschool curriculum.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion on consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Madam Chair, move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
And I second.
To have a motion in the second to approve all motions listed as consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Those motions pass. All right, going down to new business. Start with the first motion. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to adopt the Meridians. Meridians, don't take spinach. Spanish language arts curriculum and materials not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the LCSD one dual language immersion, DLI programs. The adoption is for curriculum and materials for grades kindergarten through fourth grade in both schools. This cost includes the adoption of additional grade level each year plus the cost of consumables over the next six years. Funds are available from the Department of Instruction curriculum budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Do we have any questions or discussion on that? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of granting permission to adopt the Spanish language arts curriculum and purchase, say aye. Of course. Yep, that has been approved. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to declare one facilities department vehicle as a total loss and to be recovered by the district's insurance carrier.
Second.
We have a motion in the second for declaring the vehicle as an insurance loss. Do you have any questions or discussion on that? Trustee Cook?
Yeah, Madam Chair, what, what, what happened to the vehicle?
Mr. Ciccarelli is going to tell us all about it.
Yeah, that's why I was curious.
Madam Chair, the, the vehicle was involved in an accident. And so as a matter of procedure, we have to have a formal motion to relay that property to the insurance carrier and they will effectuate the disposal of that asset. And you'll notice at this point in time, we are not asking for funds to replace that vehicle.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye. Of course. Madam Chair, move to adopt the proposed school calendar for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year for Laramie County School District number one.
Second.
Right, do we have any questions or discussion on this calendar? So I'm on the calendar committee. I was hoping that maybe we could just get a, have a quick conversation about what's changed on that. And, and what that calendar looks like and how it might be different from other years.
Mr. Praley?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Chairwoman Smith, take any questions you may have, but overall, what you will see in front of you is a change from tradition is that we've to start off in August, we've front loaded all of our staff development in our planning day to prepare for more robust staff development, professional development to prepare our, our certified and classified employees for the school year. We have moved our October parent teacher conferences to the end of the quarter. This year's trial was a trial and error in, in some extremes. Others liked it. But we felt as a calendar committee and a parent teacher conference committee, that it would be best served at the end of the quarter. More traditional, as you can see in November and December with the Thanksgiving and holiday breaks as well as January, there really wasn't a lot of discussion around when we would have those breaks. They naturally fell as they had in the past, as well as our, our spring break. And at the end, we did have some discussion around what to do with the end of the school year to try to incorporate snow days. Once again, we did get some feedback on from parents, our community, that they do appreciate snow days. And so we would add those to the end of the calendar year, but we'd also take a look at June first to bring back a planning day for teachers, for certified and classified staff to get together and have a planning day to kick off not only for next year, but to wind down the, the current school year. So those are some big changes and I'd take any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Mr. Praley, I was, a question about the professional development days. Are the teachers excited to have that block before school starts or was that input from teachers?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through we have a split a little bit. Some wanted, some staff development throughout the year. Where we landed was that we, we took a look at the absentee rate of our certified staff and it was quite high during the school year. We only had certified staff this year. Certified staff this year of about thirteen that were gone the first day and about. Uh, twenty-five on the second day. And in the upwards of the hundreds um throughout the school year. So that's why we took a look at. Um, front loading these to get better staff development, better attendance uh for those trains.
I, I know as a, a teacher, those. Days before school starts are like gold to work in your classroom, so I was curious about their thoughts on it, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? I'd just like to thank Mr. Pringle and Dawn in your office for all your hard work on this. I. Just being on that calendar committee for a couple of years or so now, it is, it's a very involved process. And I think ours is a front load of work before the committee even starts looking at multiple drafts and processing through what different changes look like, but thank you all. This is great.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Alright, do you have any other questions or discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year, now under passes. Madam Chair, move to approve the administrative professional contract on the attached list for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. And to place them on the appropriate step of the administrator professional salary schedule.
Second.
Hey, do we have any? Discussion or questions on these? Appointments? Yeah.
I have one question. Are any of these new positions or are these filling old positions?
Madam Chair, trustee Hinkle, these are all replacement of people retiring or resigning.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so those have all been approved. Did you want to comment on any of those?
I'm sure I do believe we're in the administration here this evening. Mr. Brayley, I was in the back and he will be a new assistant principal at Central High School next year. And um I've known Brayley for a long, long time, and he's a welcome addition into the administrative ranks at Central High.
No problem. Thanks for being here. Alright, moving on. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to contract uh for multimedia equipment and supplies with B and H Photo. Blum USA Incorporated, marketing one-one.
You skip one.
So I preface that I don't have my glasses tonight, because I don't, clearly, okay. Take two. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to purchase two wrestling mats for Cary Junior High. From Wrestleite Spurts products and two wrestling mats for Johnson Junior High and two cheer mats. One for East High, one for Central High. From. Dolmer Sport Surfaces for an amount not to exceed one hundred and five thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
A second.
Do we have questions or conversation on the mats? Um, I don't know if Mr. Sicarielli wants to say anything or Mr. Now, but these were funded, these are being funded through the Cheyenne. Community Recreation District through the.
Yes, sorry, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, that is, that is rec mail funded on all those mats and their replacement mats for ones that are worn out.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Now. Anybody else? Alright, all in favor, purchasing the mats, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that passes. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to contract for multimedia equipment and supplies with B and H Photo, Blum USA Incorporated, CCS. Crustacean Systems, Vultus Camera, Pyramid School Products, Scott Electric and. Gosh. Stew, Stewie Vessin Partners for multimedia equipment, throwing out not to exceed five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
A second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or conversation about this one? Nobody? Okay, all in favor, so aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, permission is passed for that. Madam Chair, move to grant permission to contract for a purchase card program with First Interstate Bank.
A second.
Right. You have any conversation, questions on that? Okay, trustee Carson, and then we'll go to trustee, trustee Ashby.
I'm gonna guess the same question, so.
Uh, actually, I don't have a question. I have a statement, so we will be different, but I believe. Mr. Sicarielli briefed us on this months ago about um accountability. And having purchase cards so that we can better track. Incidental spending, is this correct?
That was essentially, can you refresh my memory of what these are?
Madam Chair, trustee Carson, um, yes, kind of, um, uh, a few months ago, uh, we addressed the board on a plan to move a lot of our P card purchases. Uh, to Amazon storefront, which allowed us to have more visibility on the purchases that were being made by schools and departments. Um, the P card program is a little bit different, um, in the sense that, um, what we did was, um, issued what you might call a reverse bid. Uh, this is a no fee to the district. Um, we solicited a, a number of banks, um, and uh credit card providers for their commercial card program. Um, so what you see here is not a cost to the district, um, it's a program in which we'll actually receive rebates and go back into our educational program. Um, as a vehicle to uh make purchasing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to commend Mr. Sicarielli and his team for always looking for ways we can. Save on our budgeting, so good job.
Trustee Ashby.
That was the same question, same work.
Alright. Anybody else? All in favor of. Um, contracting for purchase card program, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, that permission has been granted. Um, and one more motion. Madam Chair, I move to grant permission to purchase one playground addition for the East Ridge Art Facility from Star Playground for an amount not to exceed. One hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions or comments on that? Do we? I believe that this one is also being funded by the CCRT budget.
That's correct.
Mr. Now, do you mind to? Talk about that just a bit for me.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, the question was, is it how it's funded again?
Yes.
It is. It is a rec mail project, um, and it's a full ADA compliant um section of equipment that's going to go over at East Ridge.
I, I was thinking, I remember the conversation during one of our rec mail board meetings about. The ADA compliant. Playground equipment, so this is that.
This is that.
Project, okay.
This is that, yes.
Great, wonderful, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that permission to purchase also passed. The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five at six P M. The, the business of the district is done. Do we have a motion for executive session? Madam Chair, move to go into executive session prior to adjournment for the purpose of possible student long-term suspensions, expulsions, personal legal advice and potential litigation.
A second.
All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we will.